Okay, I'd like to call meeting to order. First on the agenda, we have facilities with the bus garage.
Ross Tarn, I told, talked to Ron this afternoon and Ron said he would drive down if we needed him to, but I really didn't think that we needed Ron to be here. I've actually laid out the big plans for the bus garage. If you guys that's come in, you will see it here in a little bit, but you've got the diagram there in your board packet. And as you can see, this is a two-bay bus garage with an outside wash bay that's totally covered. And you can see the picture of the facility on the third page of that. So if it is even in the winter months, if somebody just needs a headlight changed and both of the bays are full, they can pull into wash bay, be in, out of the weather, and take care of that. Really, right now, working to finalize this. We've made the adjustments that we felt like we needed to at the office. When you're looking at this, this is the front of the building here, on this side where the actual door is coming into that foyer area where the bathrooms are at. So what that allows is if a driver's out on the weekend, they can come in, that door's on a keypad, they can come in, go to the restrooms, have access to them, but they can't have access to the garage, the tools, the training room, all those things. The gate will be at the bottom of the hill. And one thing we've been able to save a lot of money on is that in some of the other places, we were gonna have to completely fence that lot. But because this is really one-way in, there's no other access, we'll just alarm the building. We'll put the gate on the highway side that when a bus comes, let's say it's a weekend again, they'll be able to enter a code. It'll be an automatic gate, it will open, they can go through, the gate will close. And so nobody can get into the property without being able to pass through that gate. So there's really no need to fence the entire property. So that will allow us to basically do a lot more paving. Some of the, some of the bus parking area will not be paved, just like it is now. And in the future, we want to make sure that we've got the money to do the projects that we want to do, especially knowing that we've got a high school renovation coming up once we get this area technology center up and off the ground. So we want to make sure we don't spend everything we have. And if we have to live with gravel on the bus parking area, we can live with that. But now, I've told them the road has to be paved all the way in, because we can't salt gravel, you know, during bad weather. So they'll have to pave the road all the way in. They're working on that. It feels like it's gonna be in under budget. So we need to go ahead and approve this schematic design and what's gonna happen here. You're gonna get BG2s and BG3s coming back at you. This thing's on track to bid around the 1st of August, which is where we've been the whole time. So my recommendation to you all is to approve the schematic design for the bus garage. If y'all have any questions, I'll be glad to do that.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll say that.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So this, this whole piece of land, that's the whole piece of land, right? That's not the building, but it would be in.
It's all the way back in the back of that area, right back up in here, because that's where the fill is the least apart. Because that way, they could get the bedrock back there a lot easier, which is gonna save on the foundation of the building. They'll just enter through the road here, pave the road all the way up to it.
That's in that right away, or it's like it's cut out right there.
That's where they filled it in when they did the road a long time ago.
It used to be a little house sit there.
Yeah.
I had a question on the actual drawing on the wash bay. I was, I, I had a question about the wash bay. I guess the way that that's designed, in the future, that could actually be enclosed?
You could possibly enclose it if you wanted to.
I had some people just ask me about an outside wash bay, and would that be a possibility?
I think it probably could be, you know. We've not really had that discussion, but I don't know why it couldn't be if you wanted to.
The wash bay is outside, but some people had concerns about it being outside because of the cold weather. It's outside right now, but they wanted to know if that could ever be enclosed in the future.
Well, I mean, they spray them outside now, but I mean, I'm gonna go for the gold.
I think the one thing that, you know, when we first started this, it was actually gonna be inside part of the entire garage area. So there's a lot of concern about the moisture and the overspray and that type of stuff. So I know that the transportation personnel that met when we did this design, that's what the drivers and the mechanics that sit here in this room decided on, to have a covered wash bay. You know, they felt like it would be too hot in the summer to be inside trying to spray a bus. And they felt like in the winter, although they might be spraying those buses off, most of the time, it's gonna be during summer, spring areas. So the additional cost, I think we went from a bus garage that when we were looking at three bays with all of them being part of about a $1.7 million bus garage, it automatically took it down about $250,000 to eliminate that other bay. So it was pretty extensive. Now, we put some money back in it to cover it and everything, but we saved quite a bit of money by taking it outside. But I do think somewhere down the road, you could enclose it if you wanted to. And you're never gonna be able to heat it enough anyway, I mean, to where it's gonna be comfortable, that they're probably gonna feel good in there. Anything else?
That was just a question that I had been asked.
I know.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So next, we have the area technology center. And first, we have the bid package number one for the demolition.
And I think you all have that there in front of you. And we have Kenny Davis with us here from Codell. Kenny is gonna be the project manager. He'll actually be onsite.
Well, I'll have a guy that's onsite every day. He'll be my superintendent, and I'll be onsite like once a week, and I'll come to the board meetings, and I'll come to the monthly meetings, we have the job site. There'll be a guy here every single day, the blood goes on, weekends, whatever.
You're sort of taking the role that I had with Blanton, I believe, in my project that I had in the other district.
Probably, Blanton was the project manager as well.
He was, yes.
Yeah.
But Kenny's here with us tonight. We'll go through the demo package. And again, remember, this is just demo on the two buildings. This is not part of the actual construction of the area technology center. Because as part of the EDA grant, we can't actually bid or sign a construction contract on that facility until we know about that money. And we answered our final questions this week. We're fully expecting, I spoke to Jim yesterday, and Kenny just confirmed with me, we're fully expecting maybe an answer in the next seven to 10 days on the EDA grant. We've answered the final review questions after they've done their legal review. So we're gonna know something here by the 1st of July, which is not gonna impact the schedule at all in terms of where we're moving. So Kenny, if you would.
Yeah, so we, we took bids last Thursday. It's a public vote meeting, but it's all for dinner. The low bid was stonework construction, and they sent a letter to tax your packet, I believe, where they withdrew their bid. They did not fill the bid out correctly. They had basically left some items out. I called them. It's our policy that we don't penalize them, hold their thing or bond or anything. It was an honest mistake. So your next bidder was innovative demolition at $227,127. And you had three other bids even higher. So good coverage, five bids on a demolition package is really, really good. We called some references on innovative demolition. They used to be the old superior demolition, which was a large outfit. So after just a few reference calls, everything panned out. So it's our recommendation that you guys accept the innovative demolition services bid.
And again, that's the reason we have Codell hired. I mean, their experience in this area is second to none, as far as I'm concerned, in this state. So I feel very confident that we've got a good price, especially that involves the removal of the storage tanks for diesel and gas. It also involves the placement of the fence that will be needed for the construction of the area technology center. And we felt like that was very important, that that gives us a defined space so we can get traffic patterns ready for the school year in August. So as part of that, we made the fence part of this package, and they, that's part of it included. So it's been looked at. That's, that's a pretty good price based on where we're at. So my recommendation is to approve innovative demolition as our demo contractor for this project.
If I could add as well, so the game plan, if you guys approve the bid, would be for us to write contracts on your behalf, forward those to the Department of Education for approval, which is usually a two-week process. So if we get contracts set down, say Friday or Monday, then give them two weeks. So July 1st, we'll be mobilized, we'll start putting the fence up first thing, get everything like, like Blenner Siller said, and then from there, we would start doing actual demo. So the game plan would be is, it's a 60-day contract, so hopefully we'd have this done by the end of August would be the game plan.
And there's no weather days in this contract. You've got 60 days to get it done, period. Yeah, no weather days.
I think all about all the diesel tanks, removing all that.
That's huge.
Yeah, which can be pretty expensive. And there, there is allowances in this to provide for the fact that there are bad soils. There's some allowances in there for their removal and disposal, and also just a backfill. There's also allowances in here if they do encounter the pyridic shell, that they also know that it's gotta be covered up immediately. They've got like a four-hour window to do so. So that's all part of this contract. So it's pretty thorough, pretty thought out.
Unless we hit something really extreme, this number should go down, because they've got allowances built in, so everybody's on a level playing field. I didn't want XYZ bidding $500,000, and the next guy seeing totally different, bid $200,000. So they're all on the same level playing field. And if, for instance, we don't, if we don't hit any shale, then you guys will get back the money that will be set, that will set aside the allowance. So it could be cheaper. Now, if it's something extreme, where we hit, we're into all kinds of problems.
Could be a little bit more.
Could be a little bit more, but you should hook the cost down.
Yeah, but we're locked into a unit price, at least. So we know that anything extra, we're locked into that price. They can't charge us a premium afterwards.
Yeah.
You know, gallon of milk's not gonna be $2 today, and then we need a truckload, and it becomes $5 a gallon. We're locked into a price.
So where are they from?
Actually, they have an office in Lexington, and then they have a, I believe it may be Richmond as well.
I wonder what all was left off of.
Yeah. I'm sorry, those questions.
I was just questioning, that's a $100,000 difference in the two bids, and I understand that you said Stoneworks left some things off.
Okay, let me explain a little deeper than that. So the allowances that Mr. Sando was referencing, the shale, spraying the shale, the unsuitable soils, and contaminated soils, was all allowances. And that probably, is probably close to the number that they're off of, actually. I think if you added it all up, their number would have been 270, which would have been right in the middle of the pack. So the number we got from Innovative is a really good, solid number based on the fact that I've done work with Gary Taber Construction, and honestly, I thought he'd have been low to be quite honest with you. If he'd have told me, I'd ask you before we bid, and he was at 282. So Stoneworks has made a mistake. They showed me their numbers. They put them down as alternates versus, it should have been in their base bid.
Yeah, they actually gave the numbers. When we added all three of those numbers back for those three alternates that they bid, they were, they were like right in the middle of the pack. It was 270-something. So it's just a way, when they turned it in, they turned in 127. If they had turned it incorrectly, it would have been 270-something. So it's not even close. They can't. They're gonna withdraw from that bid. There's no way they're gonna do that work for that amount. It's problematic for everybody around. So it just wasn't a good bid. They just messed up. And they told us immediately. I mean, they told us within.
I called them the very next morning, talked to them, and he said I made a mistake.
So even by adding it back, and listen, if they had added it back and their numbers had still been lower, we probably could have worked around that a little bit.
Well, yeah, we, we waive all bid informalities, but it'd have been a tough sale, put it that way.
Yeah.
So the number from Innovative, you know, they're about $40,000 cheaper than the next, $35,000 cheaper, you know. I think you've got a pretty good number right here, considering the allowances. The allowances that we have built in are pretty extreme, because that could be a lot of work out there if we hit problematic, you know, soils. Cost of fingers, we don't, so you know, that's a lot of money built into that.
That's what I was thinking. With their experience with the half of the school, it's a good topic.
So again, I think we've got a good number. My recommendation is to approve the demo package with Innovative being the awarded the contract.
Do we have a motion? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Brian. Let's show you a little segment. Okay, next on the agenda, we have consideration approval of a BG2, BG3 forms, unauthorized to advertise project for construction pending KDE approval.
And again, I'll, just a little bit, and Kenny can follow up. You know, we approved the schematic design here a couple of months ago. This is a little bit more detail to the BG1 in terms of how we're going to bid. It's also got the six alternates that we'll be bidding in that BG2. So the Pedway is an alternate, the parent parking at the high school's an alternate, the alternate parking lot for the area technology center, the fire pump house for the water pressure. We've asked for owner-preferred lighting control system and also owner-preferred video surveillance system to go along with some of the systems that we've already put here in the district. So this is just the final step. This is the final step before we go to bid.
Yeah, it's a formality with KDE, so that's a paper.
And again, we'll be holding the bid process. We won't advertise right yet. We're gonna wait a few days and see where we're at here with the EDA grant. We don't wanna, we don't wanna get this close and then cause a problem on a formality. Because if we have any type of construction contract on this facility before they tell us and award, we're out. After nine months of hard work, we don't wanna do that. So my recommendation is to approve those, and we'll get everything ready. They're still finalizing their walkthrough of those plans, and it's about ready to go. It's ready to get final approval with KDE.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have land acquisition.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thank you.
For being here. We'll see you Friday?
No, I'll be at town.
Okay.
Jim's coming though.
Jim's coming. I did talk to him.
Okay.
Good deal.
Thank you. We have the land acquisition.
I did supply this letter to you all later over a minute ago, if anybody needs a letter. All of our preliminary work is done. So everything's done. This is the letter that went to KDE as of yesterday, I believe. Is that today's date? No, it was yesterday. Everything that KD has asked for is being completed. So now, it's basically on Greg Dunbar's desk to give the final approval to the land. It's just a matter of him writing the letter. He is going to try to have that letter written for us at the next board meeting, so I'm just gonna move this item over. We'll just table it. But just to let you know, survey's done, the title done, the geotech's done, everything's completed. We struggled a little bit with the survey because of a joint and property owner that did not work with the surveyor. But they went ahead, they exhausted all the efforts, and they went ahead and done that. It's about 130-acre tract based on the survey. We originally had it somewhere around 120-something. They've got it at 130. And so everything's there. It's in line, you know, as far as the, even the appraiser, in terms of the appraisal, the purchase price very much meets the appraisal for the property. So everything's ready to go. I spoke to the realtor today. I let the realtor know, everything's done, everything's in line, we're waiting on the letter, and that's it. So I just wanted to let you know that the property purchase is, basically, now we get the letter, we start drawing up the contract, and we're ready to go with them. And the landowners, the landowners have been great. They've been patient, working with us. We're very appreciative of them. Carolyn and Vivian and their entire family have been very patient with us and given us the time to do it. And quite honestly, they wanted the school district to have this property. They probably sacrificed a little bit on this property. They probably could have held out for more money down the road, but they wanted to work with the school district. And you guys, not been through the trials that these three ladies went through with the previous board, we have looked for property all over this county. And I'm telling you, we priced 10 acres of property a lot higher than this right here. I mean, we, when we tried to price some 10-acre sites, they were priced well over $230,000. We just could not find a piece of property. And then to find a piece of property that had the utilities and the infrastructure that was already there, that we could take advantage of, we've looked all over this county. We've been in vehicles, we've been up on places looking for. So it's been a long process, a long, hard process to come to that. And I know that, I think overall, in the long run, this is a good deal for the school district for future use, as long as the future boards hold on to that property and look at it in terms of the future.
There was just one thing that I wanted to add to that. I talked to some of the Puckett family this past week, and they were kinda teary-eyed and said that their mother and father would be rejoicing because the school had this property. And they all, that had always been their wish, and they were so glad that that was gonna come to pass. So I just wanted to say that. They were really excited about that.
And I think, I know there's some concerns about the landfill and some other things with that, but I think the landfill has been in my office. They have come and spoke to me. I think we'll be able to be good neighbors, and we'll work together moving forward to make sure that we try to address concerns that the public has with that property. But I'm telling you, there was, we had nowhere else to go, based on where we were at. We have looked everywhere in this county, and there was nowhere else to go. And even if that's the only place, if the only thing we ever built on that piece of property is that bus garage, it was worth it. Because, listen, we've looked everywhere, I'm telling you. So I'll bring that back to you all, hopefully, Thursday. The property owners are very patient, and they're even more patient now, knowing that we've met all the guidelines, we're waiting on the letter. So we'll get that done, and we'll get them paid, hopefully, with the bond sale includes the purchase of that property. So BG1's approved, everything's approved. So waiting on the letter, okay? Thank you all.
Okay, moving on. Next on the agenda, we have our 2019 policy and procedure updates.
No, tabled to the 20th.
Tabled, yeah, sorry.
We'll, we'll move that agenda item to the 20th. As far as the updates are concerned, I sent these out to you all, or let me put it this way, Felicia sent these out to you all electronically, and wanted to get them in your hands a little bit. I don't know if you've been able to go through them electronically. Now you have printed copies in your packet that you get to go through. And I would advise you tonight, as a first reading, we just need to get it on record that we've had a first reading of these policies. And then, take your time here over the next week, basically 10 days, look through these policies. I did wanna point a couple of things out to you. I went through, and I have labeled some of these. And if you'll sort of go to the first one, it's about, over about 15 pages, and they're in order by those numbers. And it's over about 20 pages. It's like 115-page document. There was a lot of, anytime you've got a legislature that just met, that's why you're gonna have this.
I have one with 01.1.
Yeah, it started with 01.1, the one. The legal status.
Uh huh. It said, "Board member in his, Bishop Staxby, why does it not say his or her?"
I wonder.
That's the first thing caught my eye, sorry.
And it says that in which one number?
Under number four.
Under corporate power, powers.
Under the statutory board.
Yeah.
It's the third line down, under number four.
Huh. I may ask them that, why it just says his or her. Of course, you know this is taken.
Sometimes in legal jargon, I don't like these. In legal jargon.
It may be that in legal jargon, it always, of course, what happens, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, these come directly from KR, KRSs, and that's the way the law was written. I mean, I hate to say it, but that's the way the law was written at the time those things was written. They really didn't consider.
It's just that it's legal jargon.
But I will, I will, I will ask about that. And we do live in a little different time now than we did 100 and some years ago. But if we go to 03.1327, I just wanted to point out to you, that is the use of tobacco policy. And as you know, based on the last legislative session, it is now, come July 1, our campuses are smoke-free. And anybody that's smoking on campus will be asked to not smoke. They cannot smoke on campus, they cannot smoke at ballgames, they cannot smoke here at the central office. And any personnel that's here, any group, if it comes down to a group that's renting our property, they have to ask people to refrain from that. I do worry about enforcement of that, because you're gonna have some people that's gonna look at a teacher and say, "I don't have to listen to you." And, you know, we don't always have deputies at every event and those types of things. But now, we are, we will have to obtain the signage and start posting that. I wanted to point that out to you. That's one of the policies. Then if we go over to 03.19, and that is a change in terms of professional development for teachers, is now that there has to be some type of active shooter training that's followed up every year by November 1. And that's a change, Tanya, and some of our stuff. And there's a procedure later on over here that we need to pull out that has all the required trainings now that we have to go through. So that is.
I can read me that one, but not the one about the shooter.
And that is a change. And then, I don't know the one that you got, but in the procedures here that we were sent with this, there is that checklist of trainings. And that, that's one of the areas that is really a huge fuss out there, guys, is that we keep getting these required trainings, and they're really unfunded mandates. And so what happens is, is everybody thinks, you know, teachers gripe about having to stay for this and having to stay for that, but, you know, not only do they have to teach their six-and-a-half-hour day, but then they gotta stay an hour for this training, and they gotta stay an hour for that training. And the next thing you know, there's probably 20 to 24 hours of required trainings every year they have to do, that they're not compensated for. But the bottom line is that all of us have responsibilities within our job performances sometimes that we don't get paid for.
We have a new one this year, too, epilepsy.
Yeah, I mean.
Our training, which is new.
Dyslexia is another one that's getting ready to happen. You can market, that's gonna be a required training, and they just keep happening over and over and over.
You would think. You'd think they would address that, but he's also.
Yeah, well, and I think at some point in time, you know, the state really needs to look at, and I know, they really need to look at, we only have four professional development days. And honestly, the school calendar could be extended because they could give us at least two training days beyond that that would allow teachers to have time to do some of these. But just know that that is a change, but I think that's a good change in terms of active shooting. It's a good change. Also over under 05.31, I've marked that one because that's the one that says, "The Booster Club is doing a basketball tournament at West Irving this weekend." They have to make sure that somebody's in charge of the fact that somebody's smoking outside. They have to tell them, "This is a smoke-free facility, smoke-free campus, you can't do that." I guess it's sort of like some of these hospitals, you know, you'll have to walk across the street if you want to do that. I guess you could go to your car, even though that's probably not illegal based on the policy. But that is where we're at. Also, 06.221, just to know that now that also applies to our transportation personnel. Doesn't matter what facility, if it's bus garage, if it's maintenance building, the maintenance building at Estill Springs, it's school property, it's across the board. I'll also point out that the graduation requirements, as we know, are changing. That's 08.113. And there's three different graduation requirements on there. One for current students, one for students that's entering this coming school year, and the one for students that goes through 2020. And remember, that's the new graduation requirements that, for instance, right now, they're required four Englishes, English 9, 10, 11, 12. Well, for freshmen entering in 2019, they're required two Englishes, 9 and 10, and then two English electives, which can be 11 and 12, but it could also be, if they're wanting to go into drama, it could be drama 1 and drama 2. Or it could be creative writing, or it could be speech and debate. It could be all those types of things. So what it's going to do is, it's going to give students a lot more abilities and it's going to free up schedules to allow students to be able to participate in things that they're actually interested in. And it's going to relax some of those schedules. And the last one I wanted to point out to you was student health and safety was 9.22. And that's the, that's the training concerning mental illness, which, so everybody knows, there's only one directive in this school district, this school year coming from this superintendent. And we're going to get a handle on mental illness issues in our school district. And we're laying out the plans, programs from K through 12 to address those mental health issues. And we're looking at sources of strength as a suicide prevention program for our middle and high school students. Too Good For Drugs is the elementary programs for that same, same line of thought in terms of dealing with student behaviors and just really making an effort to meet the mental needs of our students. I wanted to point those out to you. You read those. If you've got any serious questions, next time we can address them. But, and this second packet is the procedures that go along with those. So again, it's just outlining the same things, but those are the procedure manuals. So my recommendation to you all at this time would be that we would give those first reading and then next time we can have a more in-depth discussion, or you may feel comfortable So we just need a motion this time for the first reading.
For the first reading, if you're. You make a motion? We have a motion, we have, okay, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay.
We got two other policies real quick and I'll just go through those. The first one is disposal of school property. This doesn't take effect right now, but here, not this year, but the following year, we will have Chromebooks. And you remember, part of the Chromebook lease is, is that when the lease is over, we'll be able to buy those Chromebooks for, I think, a dollar. And then we can turn around and let our students keep those Chromebooks. But we have to have it within our policy that we can dispose of that property properly. And we won't be able to just give them to them. We'll have to say, you know, for a dollar, you can keep your Chromebook. Or, yes, Jeremy?
The reason that we're doing this, our policy did allow typically when we have, anytime I bring something, certain technology surplus to you guys, by law, first of the three options we have, the third would be to go to a private bid. Now, what supersedes that is the ability to sell the devices to low-income students. But to me, I was like, why do we want to limit it to just the low-income? Now, we can give priority to low-income, but considering that all of our students are considered pre-reduced lunch, that automatically qualifies them. I just felt it was better for us to have the wording so that we're not contingent hold like, well, no. We just need to allow our students, any of them to buy their Chromebook. And also wanted to allow any staff, let's say that you've got 10 students, they're like, "Yeah, I don't want my Chromebook." But then you've got a staff member that says, "Hey, I'd love to be able to buy that and use it in my classroom." And I think, you know, it'd be a, that's fine, that wording is in there, in case you want to.
Gives us greater flexibility. It also allows us to treat every kid the same. And so, especially being that we're under community eligibility. So I think that's a good policy. It's for first reading tonight as well. So if you want, give it an approval on first reading and then if you've got a problem with it, we'll discuss it next time. We'll bring it back on next week on, under consent. So my recommendation is approve policy 4.8.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Last but not least.
Yeah, this one I gave to you last time for you all to look at. And we all know why we need to look at this policy in terms of guest speakers and exactly what needs to happen. This policy does put it under the fact that we do have to do a background check of these individuals in order for them to come in. They've got to obtain permission from the principal up front. And then, of course, to make sure that anybody that's having contact with our students has passed a background check and that the principal does have knowledge that they are in the building. So that's 08.213. My recommendation is that we pass that. That would be a new policy to our district.
Do you have a second? Any discussion? All in, sorry, go ahead, all. You have a discussion?
So I had a couple of questions about the drug-related offenses.
Yes.
That says that no one shall be allowed to participate in any program if they have that.
It says that.
Guest speaker and/or program presentation participants with a felony conviction shall not appear in any school nor participate in any program presentations.
And we technically have that policy right now, even with our volunteers. If it is a felony conviction, then it's going to show up. Misdemeanors usually don't. We're not trying to keep out a person here that got caught smoking pot 20 years ago.
So my question about that is, some of the programs that you have to try to keep kids off drugs have people that are peer support specialists that are clean from drugs and they're trying to tell kids, "Hey, look, this is what happened to me, don't let it happen to you."
They may have a conviction.
So I don't know, so I don't know that we want to keep that language in there, was what I was trying to.
Do we want to define that? Usually those individuals.
Maybe you can say by case-by-case basis or something that doesn't limit you to that because some of those people have awesome stories that have turned around their lives and are productive members of our community now. And so I hate to isolate and limit that.
I see. We're definitely in agreement with number one. There is no, any conviction against a minor, that's abuse or any type of thing, we're good. Any felony offense convictions against persons, again, that is somebody that's abusive in nature, that has some type of abuse. And then any deadly weapon. All drug-related felony, what if we say felony convictions and at that point in time, and we can put a note in there that can be waived under special circumstances on a case-by-case basis?
It may need to be approved by the superintendent or the board.
And I'll check on that and I think probably it would defer back to me, I don't know, as the board you could approve, right? But can be waived on a case-by-case basis.
I mean, I just feel like that, that just.
That's good. Listen, I mean, I know that as principal before, we had individuals that were right then actual prisoners that spoke to students. I mean, they had people right there with them, you know, they weren't by themselves. But, so let me get with Kim Barker and we'll make that change and then I'll ask Kim to run it by legal and see if that don't work, we still have July that we can tweak it.
And the only other thoughts that I had on it, it says, "All felony offense convictions against persons." Well, that could be that you were driving and drinking drunk and you hit and killed another person. But we've had speakers that have come like that because they're doing community service hours or they're telling kids, "Hey, don't drive and drink drunk."
I would think that would fall under drug-related as well.
But I was just, yeah.
Let me, I will ask, and what I'll do is.
That would be a felony conviction if it was manslaughter.
I have a great relationship with Kim Barker and I'll ask her about that concern. We can give it first reading tonight with those changes and then if we have to come back and do something different, we'll just give it first reading next Thursday. We can do it in July for it to kick in, start school year. Any other points on this one? That's why I gave it to everybody last time for y'all to go through. And that's a good point. I mean. Okay, so we'll, the recommendation is, is to approve with those changes considering a possible waiver clause for first reading. That's my recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Next on the agenda, we have our out-of-state trip request.
And if y'all don't care, we'll just do one motion to approve both of these. The first one is for the Bass team to go to a national championship event in Alabama. It does not fall during the dead period, so they are able to go and Booster money can pay for that trip and they can wear their school uniforms for that particular trip. And also, we have a group that wants to take there, it's a West Care group, and they've done this every year, I think. Almost missed it because we almost didn't get it approved, but Courtney's also new to that job, so we won't miss that next time. But we're still in plenty of time to approve the trip to a Cincinnati Reds baseball game. And the West Care group, they do a great job with that camp and it's a good camp for those kids. And my, my recommendation is that the first one is not, doesn't involve the, any buses, but it does involve them in terms of pulling their boats and stuff. So by you approving it, they have insurance coverage and it approves on the Cincinnati trip, it's insurance coverage for the bus. My recommendation is approve both those trips.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Motion passed.
They're pretty awesome. So I'm impressed with our Bass fishing team.
Yeah, they've done a great job, yeah.
Okay, Ms. Tanya, next on the agenda. Are you going to talk about superintendent's evaluation?
Well, I don't know how you want to do this, Mr. Silas. Do you want to talk about your self-reflection first?
Well, real quick, what, what we did, or what we did last fall, if you remember, is that we agreed on the fact that we was going to look at instructional leadership. And at that point in time, I gave you a growth plan in terms of some of the activities I was going to be working with. I also took the standard and what I did within the standard is I highlighted, this is my self-reflection. This is where I would rate me in these particular areas. It doesn't mean you have to agree with me. You may think I've rated myself too high, you may think I've rated myself too low, but that's just my reflection on where I'm at. And what now, I've asked Tanya to be here tonight to just lead you through because what you all will do now is you should look at that self-reflection, look at those standards. I think some of you all may have already looked at the standards and you may have already came to an agreement of what you think that is. But the next time when we come back is that you all would compile those and you would come back with an overall rating. And then with that being said, I think she just gave you the entire document.
Right.
That has all seven standards on there. So not only are you going to rate me on instructional leadership this time, but you're also going to choose the area or areas that you want me to work on next time. And we've been through it before as a board, it is very difficult to rate all seven standards. They suggest anywhere between one, no more than three. I will tell you this, I do think that culture is still an issue, especially with the fact of some of the shakeups that I had to do. I think there are some culture pieces that I've got to work with those individuals. I'll meet with all of those individuals again and I will ensure them that, you know, we did this because of kids. This is not punitive in nature, none of this is. Those decisions are always made in my mind of what's best for kids. But, well, I feel like culture is something that, culture is something you gotta work on constantly anyway. It can go south quickly. So you all, I think culture is an area that I definitely need to work on. If you all want to pick another area, all y'all got to do is tell me next time, we'll work in what areas you feel like that we need to work in. So.
And Rhonda has agreed to tabulate what you all come up with, but it really, you know, one, maybe two, I don't know. I mean, the culture is massive, so if that's what you come up with, there's probably a difference. So Rhonda will tabulate and you all will share the results of the penalty, by where you think he's at. You can move forward with his professional development for next year. And that should be in July, correct?
Yeah, I think I have to have it to them no later than.
But you got to know your area in July.
I need to know my area in July. If you all want to tell me in July, I mean, you can tell me the area next week if you all want to do, or, you know, whenever that. But you've got at least until July. I have to bring a growth plan back to you by October 1, I believe, is what's in the evaluation plan. So that's sort of where we're at. And we will have executive session next time. It will be a short executive session unless I'm put on the hot seat in the burner, that it could be a long executive session. But we can sit there and talk about things in private. But now, remember, you do have to come back out in open session and give an overall rating for me in open session, that is public record.
Okay.
Okay? So whatever comments you all have or any questions you have for Tanya, I asked her to be here tonight.
Is everybody good? All right. We need a motion to adjourn. You have a second? Any discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Thank you. Okay.